So this is the Planning Commission monthly meeting. The meeting is hereby called to order at 6:02 PM on Monday, October 5th. Are there any announcements?
Yeah, I have a couple of quick announcements for you. One of the things that I put on the Google Drive is an announcement of some upcoming workshops and webinars from the Southern Vermont Economy Project, which is a program of BDCC and SEVDS. The first one, they're all virtual, is on Diversity Equity and Inclusion Toolkit. That's going to be municipal engagement for Diversity Equity and Inclusion Toolkit. That's on October 27th, 27th, oh, I can't talk tonight. Between noon and 1:00. The second is a funders roundtable. It's a primer to the, to a grant writing workshop that's going to be held later in November. So this one is on November 13th from 12:00 to 1:00. There's a couple of others with dates, but those are the two kind of immediate ones. This was sent to the Planning Commission, so they're free. None of you are welcome to jump on them. You can find more information at brattleborodevelopment.com. So take a look at that if you're interested.
Okay, do you recommend them, Sue?
I've done a couple of their knowledge bites. I will do both of these. They're a good lunchtime thing if you can take a break. Some, some of them are, you know, not as deep as a dive that I am looking for, but I've seen some good ones, so.
Okay.
I would check it out if you've got the time in your schedule.
Any other announcements?
Another announcement is we did submit the municipal planning grant last week, so that is successfully in. We did not add to the, we didn't add to the budget that we're requesting for, for funding participation in it, but that is a cost when we get into outreach that we can consider paying if we want to, you know, pay for participation of some sort. So we can talk about that. I won't rule it out. That would come from the department budget anyway, so.
Okay. Prudence, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to let people know that BCAT has created a survey to find out about walking and biking needs and priorities and level of awareness in Brattleboro. And it's kind of in lieu, we, we had, the town and BCAT together would put on a forum each fall that was, was pretty valuable. I think we did maybe four of them, annual forum. And so, given that we can't gather together, the survey's kind of in lieu of that. So anyway, when it's, it's going to be ready quite soon and I'll send it out to everyone if you can share with people that would be interested. We tried to keep it short. I think it's a survey, I think it's a survey monkey.
Okay, cool, great. Any other announcements? Okey doke. Public comment doesn't look like we have any public. According to our new practices, if there, if a public shows up, we can, we will make time for them.
The way we were going to do it was that we, we changed the agenda. I don't know if that needs a motion, Sue, or not, to change the agenda to move public comment to the end of the meeting?
Um, I don't think we need a motion. I think we just forgot that for this time, so we will make note of it and do it the next time.
So, but we, but we, we, we can change our agenda mid-meeting, right? So we can just put, take.
Oh, yeah.
See and, and.
Yeah, we can add that.
Okay, super. So if I forget, will somebody just remind me that if there is a public, we should ask for their thoughts at the end of the meeting? Welcome, Kathy.
Hi, I'm finishing dinner.
Yep, yep, I totally get it. Okay, approval of the minutes of September 14th. Did everybody get a chance to go through those? Yes, do you guys, are you, are you, are you, are you a comment? Or do you want to make a motion to approve?
Comment.
I have a comment. Go ahead, Tom.
Motion, motion to approve and then we'll second it and then we can have comments.
Oh, sure, I motioned to approve those minutes.
I'll second that.
Okay, comments?
Yes, I wonder what you all think. I don't feel strongly one way or the other, but about maybe getting the minutes, like within a few or several days or a week of having the meeting? So that way it's more fresh on our minds as far as making any corrections or adding anything in. So that way, you know, if, so when it's like a month later, sometimes memory being what it is, we may be forgetful and then just totally take the staff's word on everything, which is, I have full trust in them, but it kind of, I feel like a month later kind of weakens our powers of review. What do you guys think?
Comments?
That kind of relates to, my comment was just to request that when planning commissioners have an assignment or a task to do, to actually name who it is just to keep us accountable and, and, you know, similar to that idea. If we did get the minutes a little bit earlier, then that could remind us if we had assignments, you know.
Andrew, Sue, do you?
So I, I would just say it's totally doable for us to send you the minutes. We, they have to be posted within five days of the meeting, so they are done. You know, by the end of the week, they'll be done and posted to the town's website. So it's not a big deal for us to send them to you at that time.
Oh, great.
Yeah, I, I always do minutes directly after the meetings. I always post them usually the day after. So tomorrow, for example, they'll be up on the website. But just to make sure you know that, we will make sure we add it to the Google Drive. And if you can, I can send a reminder email if that's helpful.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
So are there any other? Dyer was misspelled. But.
What was misspelled?
Dyer.
Okay.
Dire consequences, dire straits.
How is, how is that spelled?
D-I-R-E.
Oh.
I am a terrible speller, but every once in a while, I'm like, wait a minute, that don't look right. So any other, any other comments? Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes, accepting the correction of the misspelled word? Kathy, can you do a thumbs up? Great, okay. The minutes are passed. All right, Western Avenue Bike Ped Scoping Study. That's you, Sue, right?
So we are about to start this bicycle lane scoping study on Western Avenue in between Exit 2 and the downtown. And we had a kickoff meeting with the consultant and my state project coordinator and DPW. And it was recommended that we put together a steering committee who would work with us to kind of, you know, lend a voice, give some feedback, you know, make some recommendations, particularly as we go out to the public with it. So this has kind of been a project that came before Traffic Safety Committee and then Planning Department took it upon, you know, working with other town departments to write this grant, so it's not per se a project of the Planning Commission. But I was wondering if there is somebody who, from the Planning Commission, that would want to serve on a steering committee about this project. Maybe three or four meetings later this month in October, we'll be having some sort of public outreach. We're still working through that with the consultant, probably a survey, maybe a Zoom meeting. We might look at doing small walking tours, like where you sign up and, you know, we, we walk you on the, the, along Western Avenue to kind of point out where the challenges are and kind of get some ideas for where the bike lanes should be or could be and some things that we need to be looking out for. So that project is scheduled to be completed by the end of May. Basically, it, that's kind of the engagement this fall. And then in January, there'll be a meeting where there's like three alternatives that are discussed with the public and we'll get feedback on. And then the consultants will go about refining that project. It's a pretty typical and defined process that these consultants need to use that Vtrans, Vermont Agency of Transportation, kind of puts forth is, if you're doing a scoping study, here's how you do it. They'll be collecting information on historic and cultural resources and the environmental constraints along the way. But just wondering if somebody might be interested in serving on a steering committee. It would probably be meetings during the day, virtually.
Prudence, is that you volunteering?
I am, I'm interested, you know, perhaps others are as well.
Anybody else interested? It's all yours, Prudence.
Okay, my only problem, I'll be away for a week, the first week of November.
Okay.
But. Okay, good, thanks.
Excellent, thank you. Um, okey doke, we are on to Planning Commission norms. So does everybody, this is a, this is a vote? And these will go into our bylaws. The procedural thing will not. So is everybody clear on that? That's pretty much which, what we discussed last week, last meeting, last month. I want to just go back and find the norms. Procedurally, do these need to be read in? And then voted on? Or can they just, we, everybody can, everybody can see them. I have, I have one question, which is there are the four bullet points and then there's a paragraph down below that ostensibly repeats the first bullet point. Is there a reason for that?
Say it again, Felicity.
There, there are four bullet points, starting with trust each other. And then at the bottom, there's a paragraph, there's a little, three sentences that repeats the first bullet point.
I just put that in there, I forgot to delete it. It was just to help me because I just tried to paraphrase a little bit in the definition. The wording, I just wanted it there so I could keep track. So done, that's just an error, shouldn't be there.
So what we're voting on are the four bullet points, starting with trust each other, then respect each other's time, listen attentively, be respectful and open. Is to, should we make a, make a motion to approve these and add them to our bylaws? And then have a discussion or? Everybody okay with that? Okay, so is the motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Great, Tom seconds it, all right, discussion.
I just, I'm trying to pull them up, my device is malfunctioning, so I apologize, I'm a little slow here.
I can read them to you if you want me to.
That would, that would be awesome. Every time I try to load it, my app is crashing.
The first one is trust each other and then there's a dash. Bring full emotional and psychological selves to our meetings and are respectful of each other's humanity, period. We maintain and assume thoughtful and kind intentions and acknowledge if we have caused hurt or offense. We work to make choices that will benefit the greater good. I'm going to add a "we will" to the bring. Can I do that? Can you do that, Andrew? So that it's trust each other, period, or colon, and then we will bring full emotional, et cetera. We maintain, we work, that way it's consistent. Do I have to make an amendment? No, we're just, we're just, okay. Respect each other's time, come prepared, listen actively, really listen to what is being said. And be respectful and open, keep an open mind during meetings.
Thank you.
Yes, Tom?
Yeah, I am, just first, the, the caveat to my devil's advocate questions and points is that I think these are all wonderful and I support them. But I wonder, being in the bylaws, when, when a commissioner or member goes against something in the bylaws, is there an enforcement and penalty mechanism? And so are we, are we going to be, I didn't see anything in the bylaws, but isn't that the point of making something bylaws? To have it be like, kind of set in stone, like law? And then usually there's some sort of penalty as a result? And then it seems a little odd to me or out of place to be making law sort of, of, or like regulating people's thoughts and intentions and feelings. Can people chime in on that?
Are you talking about bullet point one?
Well, all of them, I mean, like, we're effectively going to have a bylaw and one aspect of it says, keep an open mind. So what happens if people don't keep an open mind? Do our, do our bylaws carry any enforcement or penalty, you know? Usually they do, I think, but I didn't see anything in ours.
Yeah, I mean, I would assume theoretically we could be thrown off the commission.
Well, the, the only enforcement in our bylaws has to do with failure to attend meetings. I think that's the one, I'm not looking at them right now, but I can pull them up. In which case, the select board, or the Planning Commission would make a recommendation to the select board to have somebody removed. Because the select board appoints you and it's kind of there, they would have any kind of enforcement action. So it's a good question that you ask.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's an interesting one. It reminds me of questions I, in my past, when there was a stipulation that, that, that in order for faculty members at my previous institution to get tenure, they had to have a certain, they had to have express vitality. Which, which was, you know, discussed as, oh, wait a minute, what, what, you're perfectly good professor, but you lack vitality.
I wouldn't know how to take that.
So, so I, I, I understand, at the same time, I sort of think, well, if somebody doesn't have an open mind, do, don't we want to say? We, we don't want you on the Planning Commission? I mean, I think the enforcement is a really good question, but it, but it, but it does seem to me, and I guess, I mean, this is one of these ticklish points that I think we, that the whole point of doing this is actually to have these ticklish conversations, that, that you do want people to be open-minded, because open-minded people are not necessarily going to create protocols and laws and regulations that exclude people that they, that they in their closed-mindedness think ought to be excluded. Right? I mean, that's the whole notion of keep an open mind. At least within the social justice framework. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm, I, maybe I'm, I don't know what I'm talking about, but that, that's my understanding, is the sort of, that's the virtue of the open mind, is you don't make regulations that are exclusive. And so in that instance, it is, it is kind of important, if we're really actually making a commitment to make a different world, we have to require people to think differently and act differently.
Awesome, I'm looking back over the notes, meeting notes from last time, and I think was, there was a difference we discussed, and maybe the distinction doesn't matter, but the difference we discussed between editing the bylaws versus establishing a separate policy for norms. And I, I, I wanted to put that forth again, because I wondered if maybe establishing this first as a policy for norms and then living with it for, for a little bit might be a lighter lift to begin with.
So.
So I wanted, I wanted, yeah, I wanted to offer it as a thought and see what others think.
Put it in the procedural document that we, that we're going to discuss next, as opposed to the bylaws.
Yeah, that, that, my recollection from last time and from looking over the meeting notes is that it's an easier lift to edit the procedural documents. So if we were to put these there first and then see, you know, what our comfort is with them, working with them, see if something comes up where we realize we want to change the way something's worded, that might be an easier lift. And then we could consider moving them into bylaws later. Just, I, like I said, I'm not wedded to it as a process, but I'm suggesting it because that, I wondered if others thought that might be a, a easier way to sort of iterate into it.
Comments?
I, I agree with that. I think this is more fitting of a procedural document than bylaws.
Yes, you are nodding your head.
Yeah, I think it, it would make sense to house this in a policy. Policy for procedure, behavior, or some sort of ethics or values document, guiding document.
Kathy, Prudence?
I'm fine with that, with having it in the, in the procedural document.
Yeah, I'm fine with it as well. I was actually just looking up the bylaws and the bylaws references of, you know, part of the state law. To just see whether it would be inappropriate to put it in the bylaws. I think it's fine either way, frankly. The way that the law is written, it implies general. I just had the link open, sorry. You know, it implies promote prosperity, comfort, access to adequate light and air, convenience, efficiency economy and the general welfare among a lot of other lofty general purposes, so I think either way.
So it's in fact, the, the laws are already consistent with what we're saying. Sounds like from what you've just read.
Well, I think, um, it's, I think the question of can, how we, it's, it's further defining how we conduct ourselves in the, you know, work toward what is laid out in the law, municipal planning, but I think it's fine to put it, you know, either way. So fine putting it in a separate, you know, procedural document. And it may be then that we put the values there as well. You know, maybe we're actually creating an, a dent, like an addendum document or something to the bylaws or, and I don't know if there's a legal question here, like, I think what Tom was saying, you know, it's like, if it's in the bylaws, it's.
Well, so Sue, can you, can you answer that question? The, how, how legally binding are the bylaws?
Don't feel comfortable answering that question at this point. I'd probably want to check in with the town attorney on that.
Okay, I mean, let's, I mean, it seems to be the consensus is we can move it to the procedure. So why don't we move, move it to the procedure? And, and it might not be a bad idea if we just put, put it on our agenda that we're going to revisit this issue in what, I don't know, January? Is that long enough for us to sort of get a, know it goes?
That sounds like a good idea to me.
And then.
I just stuck in the chat a link to the chapter of law that sort of defines it. And so the bylaws refer to, you know, essentially, how is it worded? Sorry, getting lost here in between our, my documents. Powers and duties. It, you know, puts specific things. And then the last one is perform such other acts or functions as it may deem necessary or appropriate to fulfill the duties and obligations imposed by and the intent and purposes of Chapter 117, Title 24. So the link is there if anyone wants to look at it.
Okay. So, so let's, let's, I mean, procedurally, what do we do? We've, we've, we, I guess we need a, a, a motion, we, we should take the vote and, and vote nay. And then, because we had, we took a vote to put these in the bylaws and this is the comment section for that. So let's, let's have the vote and vote as you wish, but then we'll move to the next thing. So all those in favor of putting the norms document as read into the bylaws? Say, are there yeses? No, are there nays? Yes, okay, the nays have it. It does not pass on to procedurals. So does everybody have that document in front of them? That's the one that has our values in its pretty color-coded state. So it starts with values and equity focus. The Brattleboro Planning Commission wants to ensure that our work is based on our values and that our initiatives improve equity. Our efforts will focus on four aspects of equity and then there are, they are listed there. At the bottom are, are the values. So do we want to say, and in practice, these values will be manifest in the following norms?
Yes, I think that would be great.
Okay, Andrew, can you put that, write that down? Okay, so then we, then we put our, then we put our norms down below that.
So can I, would it be an appropriate time to make a motion?
No, that would be great.
Can I make a motion to, um, to accept this as a procedural document of the Planning Commission with the amendment of adding the norms in practice to the end of it?
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, is there discussion? I'm hearing no discussion. I'll call for a vote, all those in favor of the motion? Putting, okay. All right. We now have a procedural document. We haven't, we haven't discussed when we're, we'll review it. I think when we talked about it, we said we would sort of review it around every, once a year, around the same time that we review the bylaws. But we just said that we were going to return to the norms conversation in January to see whether or not we wanted to put them in the bylaws. So shall we just revisit this in January as well? I think it would be extremely helpful for my own, for, just because of these, that these don't become window dressing, that we figure out some kind of benchmark that we can utilize in order to see whether or not we're doing what we say we want to be doing. And I don't have any idea how to do that, but I, I wonder if there is any way to test that we are in fact making Brattleboro more distributionally equititious, equitable, 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 structurally equitable, trans and intergenerational equitable and procedurable, procedurally equitable. Like, how, how do we, how do we benchmark that so that we can actually say, yeah, we're doing what we said we were going to do?
Does, um, does the Just City Resource Pool have anything that refers to how to? Does, um, does the Just City Resource Pool have anything that refers to how to, how to make these values measurable?
I will look.
At the very least, I think like our work is kind of driven by the agenda document. So maybe if we include them kind of as on the agenda every time, and then we just check as we go through each agenda item, just check if we have considered them in that discussion. Maybe that's a way to start, at least trying to, you know, build the habit.
I think we might. I think that's a good idea. I was going to add a suggestion. We might, when we work with consultants, which we do fairly frequently, point this out to them. So that we can then be, you know, making sure that we're measuring the work we do with them against that as well.
I think that's a good, I, whoops. I think that's a good idea. I was just thinking that with that scoping study and getting public input that we need to, you know, look at these, at the values, you know, in the course of that work.
Andrew, did you want to say something?
Yeah, just real quick. So as staff, I find this very helpful because I myself, I'm not sure, I'm not going to speak for Sue, but I already printed the values and I have it right next to my computer. So every time I'm doing something related to what we're doing with the commission, I can make sure I follow those into my own work. And taking direction for you. So I just wanted to give you a heads up, just so you know that myself will also be using what we just adopted to help guide my own work within the department. So it's very helpful.
Yeah, Jess.
I wonder, I wonder if there's any way to connect with the development review board to, to check in on these or discuss what these are, might mean in our, in our work together, since they're really sort of the folks that are more on the ground than we are.
Didn't we used to, we used to have an, at least a sort of annual joint meeting, didn't we, Sue?
Yep, yep.
We could make that the agenda for that.
Yeah, we definitely can. I mean, I want to be careful about making them, it's not really their role to be doing this. They're quasi judicial. They're, you know, following and interpreting the regulations. So I think it's up to us to make the regulations read the way that we want it to read. They can't, you know, they're not really supposed to be subjective in their interpretation of it too much. So I just think we just have to tread carefully there. But certainly we can share with them what our values and norms are.
Okay. I love the idea of putting them on the agenda. I think that, that would be, that would be helpful. And somewhere front and center on the website. Would be good too.
Yes, I'm not sure if you saw, but I added the values to the website. So those are front, center. I will also include the link or some, or some, or an image of what they are so that they're also very.
Great. Thank you. Um, okay. It looks like we are on to Bradlboro Brownfields project update. Take it away, Sue.
Yes, it's been quite a long time since I provided an update on where we are. I did drop into the Google Drive, the status of funds, and I can either share my screen or if you just want to pull it up as we're looking. We did get a one-year extension to kind of try to finish off the funds and pretty much have a plan in place. When you look at the petroleum assessment, we have about $42,000 left, actually about $43,000. In reality, it's probably a little bit more of that. We have, you're only seeing the funding that was set aside for assessment, but we also do have staff time and a little bit of time in there. So one of our sites, Long Falls Paper Board, needs some additional testing. This is up on Wellington Drive. It's a property. It's the, the one that, what's the name of the company? It was closing at the end of the year. BDCC stepped in to purchase the building and Long Falls Paper Board is currently operating it. There had been a tank. Tom, do you have a question?
Yeah, I do. Correct me if this isn't germane to that topic, to this Long Falls Paper Board at all, but I couldn't help but notice that someone put a posting up that there, that, that that property is currently listed for the tax sale for over $300,000 overdue to the town.
Yes.
Just, just a note for everyone. That's all I know.
My understanding as well. What I would say regarding additional work that's needed, I'm not sure that it matters who owns the property. That, you know, the state is wanting some more delineation of a tank that had had a leak in like the mid 90s, 1996 or something like that. And so also BDCC has a cleanup grant from the EPA to deal with some other contamination on the property in the soils. So we're waiting, I'm waiting to get a proposal from the consultant as to what the additional delineation of this tank that had a release on it would be. It's something that the state had actually, it had been investigated in the 1990s. It had been, at that time, they had enough information and said, okay, we're going to close this out. It didn't release them from any liability to it or any future property owners. And so now because there's these other plans in place, the state would like it more information on it and standards have changed since the 1990s. So like I said, I'm waiting to get a, a cost proposal for this. Stone Environmental has been doing the environmental work on behalf of the town's Brownfields program. I am, I'm pretty sure that it's going to take the rest of this petroleum fundings, which has been difficult to use. So it will be good to get the information the state needs for that site. Hopefully get it cleaned up. And then if you look at the petroleum, or sorry, the hazardous site assessment, we basically have only one site that we're still working with and it's showing that it's a negative that, that we, well, it's a little funny. But it's showing that we're in the negative on this. We probably are in the negative, but again, we're going to shift some staff time. And so we do, within the entire grant, we have the money for this. In fact, we probably have some extra money. It's something I need to work out with our finance department. We are still working on the 250 Bird Street site. We've been working with Mylon and McBroom. They're providing final site plans and, or not final, site plans for permitting purposes and dealing with the wetlands and the shoreline and then act 250. So there's still work going on. As you see, there's about another 6,500 to spend on that site. And there's actually some additional work to be done. So once I figure out exactly what we have in the entire grant, not just what you're seeing here for the assessment, we'll probably move some money. And hopefully finish up some of the design work on that property. There, and that, that should happen this, this fall. The site plans have changed a little bit than probably from when you probably last saw it, which I don't know if that was months ago or if it was a year. I've lost all sense of time these days. And that's due to feedback that they've received from state agencies. The plan is still to have passive recreation on the property. There had been at one, at the far end of the site, there had been some stormwater filtering system that was going to be put in place there. And that has changed a bit so that it's more of a natural design. So there will be public meetings on this as soon as the plans are ready to kind of get some feedback. Another big one is the state really wants the riparian area to have a dense buffer of trees. So this is the area along the wetstone brook. They want the entire river quarter, which is 100 feet from the top of bank to be really densely planted. This is an area we might push back a little bit because we do want use of that spite, that space. But understanding that we need the vegetation there as well. So this is moving forward and there'll be more to show you and more to take to the public. Let's see.
Which property was that again? Sorry.
This is 250 Bird Street. It's the, was the former Kiln Drive property. You see it best from William Street.
Why, what's the, why do they want to densely plant the bank?
This is, I think it's, it's a place where we're having a little tension with them. So from the town, we see this as like an urban green space that's got a lot of public benefit. And I think that from a river corridor protection perspective only, it's kind of, they would like to see the floodplain fully restored. And it revert back to whatever that looked like, you know, 200, 300 years ago. So I haven't been involved in those conversations.
I guess, I mean, yeah, the, the question I guess is, Kathy, maybe you can answer this. I mean, is there an environmental reason to thickly plant there? And, and because I know we want more public space and that it makes, makes sense. But if it's, if it's an environmental question, then we, we, we wouldn't want to argue with them, right? Is it a, I guess that's, so that's why.
Benefits, there's benefits to the stream for there being shade. You know, that it can improve water quality and fish habitat and whatnot. Kathy, I don't know if you want to weigh in some more. I'm not sure why the entire 100-foot riparian buffer needs to be as densely planted.
Yes, that's what I was going to ask too. They're, they're not talking about the width of the buffer. They're talking about the number of stems per acre in the buffer or something?
I think, I think it's stems per acre in the buffer. So it could just be that the plant I saw had them throughout the buffer and I had a very visual reaction to that.
And are you talking, when you're talking stems, are you talking trunks? Are you talking ferns?
No, it would be like woody plant, trees, you know, or bushes that are woody, that are perennial. Is that the right word? Yeah, bushes, not like herbaceous stuff.
Okay. It would restrict, it would restrict human movement down to the bank, essentially.
Not, not necessarily. Not necessarily in the way I saw it laid out by the engineers would it do that, but it could prevent, you know, somebody playing frisbee on the property or something like that. They, they seem to think that they could redesign it in a way that would allow, you know, some openings. You know, part of it, the, the, what I had told the engineers, I was interested in seeing was, you know, some views. So views into the property from William Street and also views from the property to the brook and then access to the brook where we can, even if it's informal. So I didn't want the vegetation to kind of be a buffer to those kind of values that have been discussed before.
Okay. Um, next, what's, was that, is that all on the brownfields?
Yeah. Well, no, one other thing. So the EPA has Brownfields grants out right now with a due date of October 28th. So it's my recommendation, the Wyndham Regional Commission has EPA Brownfields funds, but they're actually kind of quite low. So my recommendation was going to be that the town apply again this year for probably 200,000. One of the nice things about this year's proposal is that you can use the funding for both hazardous and petroleum. So we don't need to get two pots of money. We can just get one and use it. However, there have been several sites in Bradlboro that we were not able to bring through our program because we didn't have the funding. So they did go to the Wyndham Regional Commissions, which has been great. So there's a property on Flat Street that's been assessed by them. There's been some work done on the archery building. So it's good to have these funds around and I think it's worth, worth an application by the town to go for more funding.
Do you have some sites in mind?
I don't in particular. I'm going to rack my brain so that I can write a compelling grant.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Um, any, moving on, next item, planning updates.
So you're probably all wondering what's going on with the downtown plan. And I'm here to tell you that there hasn't been much, but that's on myself and the workload that we've been carrying in the department. So Andrew has been out videoing, videoing, and we're going to get them to the consultant to kind of cut the short videos. And then we'll be ready to take that out to the DVA and others. It just, we just haven't had the time to do that work and do it well at this point. So that's where that's at.
Okay. Any comments?
Um, just a question. And I apologize. I should know and don't remember. Was there a deadline we were working towards with the downtown plan? What was that again?
No, I mean, in terms of a grant closeout, we can go ahead and do that. You know, we've expended all the funds. We're just kind of working through the public outreach and input at the end.
Thank you.
Okay. How to prepare for coronavirus winter?
So when we were putting together this agenda, we were talking about the state of the downtown and I don't have, you know, a great update for you. I think there is some concern, you know, right now the CARES funding that has come through and kind of the programs that DBA and others have been able to do for the downtown have been helpful. I think there is worry after December. What kind of support there is for the, the retail and the commercial businesses? But anyway, one of my coworkers had sent this article that we thought was interesting and ties back to the placemaking that we discussed at the beginning of the pandemic. And we've kind of shared this article around. So I didn't know if it maybe, you know, resonated with you, if it spurred anything, if we want to do anything with it. But kind of planning for the winter and people being in outside spaces and yeah, that was kind of the, the thought there.
I think the notion here was that we had, we had taken an interest in, in downtown and vitality earlier on in the pandemic. So this is a way to sort of go swing back around and see what we're, what the commission is thinking about. So it's a, open for discussion. Yeah, Prudence?
I was really glad to read that article because I think I started the Atlantic article that they mentioned, you know, they referred to, and it was really depressing. So I, I thought there were a lot of good ideas. One thing is sidewalk clearing and that's, you know, been an ongoing challenge in Bradlboro and I, and I think it improved with the purchase of a second sidewalk plow. But it seems like, you know, this winter, it's, it's always important, but it maybe, maybe because of the pandemic, it'll allow us to focus on it a little bit more. And I, I wondered what was, what the plan was for the parklets that we've got now. And then the only other thing I wanted to say was that like at Gallery Walk on Friday, there was a little, there was a band playing in the alley between Experience Goods and Vermont. Photographic, BPC. And it was just great. It's a great space. I mean, it really fit the descriptions in that article of being, you know, sort of protected from the wind and it's small, but still it just seems like that, that space came to mind in particular as having potential for some community building, gathering, whatever.
Your question about the parklets, it's my understanding that Your question about the parklets, it's my understanding that we're going to give it a go for them to stay in the winter. I, I'll have to ask about the ones actually on Main Street and Elliot Street, exactly how those will be handled. I know that there was discussions about the one in High Grove staying as long as they're willing to kind of shovel out the interior space. But I think your point about sidewalk clearing being really important is, is is definitely spot on.
And that could be a discussion at traffic safety, I guess. Any other comments? Ideas?
Are there any, are there any barriers that like the downtown group is finding or are they like short on ideas? Or like is, as planning commission, like is there anything in particular that we can do to help solve their challenges? Sue, do you know?
I can't think of any. I can reach out to Stephanie. The meeting, there's a meeting next week. Why isn't that showing?
Sue, how many businesses have closed?
I don't have an exact number. Let me see if I can pull up. I've been keeping track. When I noticed something, I don't have an idea on the second floors. I don't have that number. I think I've seen like maybe three that I've noticed. I kind of, as I'm walking downtown, if I see something has closed, I will kind of put it on the list because we report annually with DVA to the state's program, to the state's downtown program about new businesses, closed businesses, that kind of thing.
It seems like given there hasn't interest in data, that, that would be something that would be worth, us worthing, worth sort of keeping ourselves abreast of that piece of information.
Yep.
In addition to the housing data, sort of keeping, keeping tabs on like how much, what, what, what the vacancy rates are and that sort of thing.
Yeah, the vacancies, vacancy rate is more of a challenge. We do have housing unit creation in the downtown that we report on annually. So that we can provide vacancy rate in the downtown only, we'd have to go out and kind of survey that probably annually. I mean, we can try to put something together.
I mean, I'm just sort of thinking businesses are going out, I mean, people are going out, are going out of business, but we have a housing shortage. It just seems like there's, so those two pieces of information would be useful to have a sense of so that we could understand. Because I'm curious in the notion that we have a housing shortage, but people are going out of business. So where are those people working that are looking for housing? And is it possible that we can, we can survive with fewer businesses as long as people are living here? I, I get, I guess ultimately, I mean, I'm sort of thinking about the whole function of the planning commission is kind of keeping its finger on the pulse of data and information. And so the notion that we, in this new era that we're living in, there are lots of telecommuters, digital commuters. So is it possible for businesses to close in Brattleboro, but for us not to see the economic impact of that? Because it will be mitigated by more housing for the digital commuters. In which case, we may be sort of thinking about, we're, we're going through some kind of a shift that we might want to at least understand.
Yeah.
Have it happen to us.
I share the interest in more data. It might be hard to know. I, I, I know my husband and I are now telecommuting, even though we worked locally because they've closed the offices because they couldn't, you know, make them safely social distanced. And I know anecdotally from listening to realtors, whom I know casually in the community, that they're seeing a lot of sales coming from people who are telecommuting and are moving up to Vermont, both in Brattleboro and in the area. I think it would be interesting to know from our local businesses if they're seeing a shift in how their business is engaging with people. So are people doing more takeout? Are people eating outside a lot? And then think about if they're, you know, if, if they're expecting barriers in the colder months for that, like are they worried about deliveries or parking for to-go items, which gets to the shoveling thing? Or, you know, do they want, do they have a protected deck that they want to have a heater on or something so that people can be eating outdoors? I, I'm not, I don't know a lot about the restaurant business or retail, but you know, I'd be interested to hear if they've noticed like a shift in how people are interacting with their business and if they expect that to continue in the winter and if there's anything that is a barrier to them in order to be able to support, you know, the direction that the business is shifting in.
I would suggest, DVA has this one-to-one program that they've been running where they have a staff member who has been doing a lot of one-on-one contact with the businesses. And it might be, maybe we can ask her to come to the meeting in November and kind of share that. And I can reach out and say, you know, planning commission is really interested in exactly those things that you were just talking about and see if.
That sounds great, yeah.
Put that in there.
Okay, anything else?
I think we'll be found up baked potatoes on the corner. I read the Bloomberg article.
Yeah, just a heads up to everyone that the select board meeting tomorrow night will include the tenants' union of Brattleboro's proposal to limit security or move in deposits to one month's rent. So that's what Doran Ham has been working on with his team for the last couple of months. So if anyone can show up and support or offer a comment or send an email, I think that, that proposal goes right towards our, our ideas about equity and affordability and those other values that we have on, on housing.
Okay, do we have any member of the public who has shown up in the interim? No. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Before, before I make a motion to adjourn, I'll share with everyone, I probably will miss the next two meetings. I think I shared with a few of you that we're expecting another baby in probably mid-November. This will be our fourth. So I'll probably miss the November one just because I might be like sitting there going like, looking at my watch, am I going to go into labor yet? And then I'll probably miss the December one because I'll just had the baby at some point. So I'll see you all in January. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
So I realize how long it's been since I've seen you in person.
Yeah, I, I've got, I look like I swallowed beach ball, but it'll all be over soon. I'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn if we're ready.
I was just going to say, I am expecting tomorrow night that the planning, that the select board will be appointing a planning commissioner. And Doran did apply, and as far as I know, he's the only applicant. So he should, hopefully will be appointed tomorrow night.
Great, okay.
Awesome.
So is there a second to the motion to adjourn? Second, okay, all those in favor of adjourning? Thank you all. We are stand adjourned.
Bye, folks. Thank you.
Take care, stay safe.
Bye.